Welcome, everybody. My name is Peggy Murrow and I think most of you in the room know me. Tonight, we're going to have a full agenda. So, now you're going to be able to hear us ourselves. We're not going to be up here speaking. We did want to sell, but we wanted to give you some good news. We're creating a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and we've asked some folks to be members of our board of directors. And two of them are here tonight. We're very thrilled and proud to announce that one of our board of directors is Dan Quinn. Dan, who's been a... You all know Dan. Dan's family owns and has a restaurant. Dan is a businessman and he's very involved in this issue. And we have Seth Samuel from Adam McCann. Steph was our platinum sponsor. Seth sponsors. He can sponsor for the Music Festival, the Summer Conference. I think it's the first one, Steph. He was our platinum donor for your recovery, the comedy recovery nights of the United States. Really good news. Because the good news is I'm getting a new life. And the third gentleman that we've asked, gentleman and female, will be on the board. And I know that the folks up here know him, but we are thrilled to death. We have Brian Corson joining our board. Brian is probably one of the most respected people in recovery. He has MVP Recovery. He has so much success. His wife has a new initiative with these gentlemen that I won't steal their thunder. They're going to tell you about that. So, I wanted to thank Mimi Baldwin, Lori Hannon, Jean Montgomery, and Harold Rosenthal. They were out there in the lobby handing out the brochures. So, thank them. They're part of the event team. So, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Diana Madio. I'm a resident of Havertown Township. And I want to thank you for your courage and concern. Thank you for being here tonight. This disease of drug addiction can be a very, very isolated disease and a very shameful disease. I know this because my son battled addiction for 10 years and passed away three and a half years ago. His name is Andrew Jonathan DeFue. What I'd like to say tonight is you are going to hear some statistics. You are going to learn about this crisis if you don't know about it already. And you will have a deeper understanding of what you can do personally in your homes and in your community to fight this addiction because we are going to overcome this epidemic. We'd like to thank Superintendent Rushe was here a minute ago. We'd like to really thank her for giving us this space tonight. This is the second year in a row that the school district has invited us in to the back-to-school nights. We were at the high school back-to-school night. And this week, Monday and Tuesday, we're in the middle school. And we have had a member over at the middle school tonight for the eighth grade back-to-school night. We would like to thank Mimi Baldwin and her daughter Jenna, Teresa Taggart, Dawn Simcox, Claire Chappie, and Lori McGarvey, who was behind the table tonight in the middle school. Thank you so much for being here. Please, if when our presentations are over, if you have any questions or would like to speak to any of us personally, please don't be afraid to approach us. Thank you.
I also wanted to let you know that we have Jan Baffa and we have Kate Stickle. They're feelings. Patty O'Donnell is going to work tonight. I don't know if any of you know Patty, but she's in the ER with a bad eye. She went to Bullseye and we had her over at Jefferson. So, thank you, Kate, and thank you to Jan Baffa. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce the moderator, the third board commissioner, Kevin LaPlasmo.
Thanks, Peggy, and thanks all of you for coming tonight. Just briefly, we do have a full agenda and we have a great panel up here. I did want to just touch, Peggy and Diane don't necessarily like to brag on themselves, but I did want to just touch on the Havertown Alliance for Drug Awareness and how it's formed and what it's about. You know, we're going to try to give some of the panel, we're trying to try to give some practical steps, but if you really want to get involved, HADA is doing some great things. So, I encourage you to look into it when you leave here today. HADA formed, it's essentially the story for all of us being here tonight. I think most of us here tonight understand that we probably all know somebody who is affected with the disease of addiction, whether, you know, it's a family member, a close friend, a cousin, you know, the neighbor down the street. And if you don't think you know someone, I would suggest to you you probably do. But I think probably if you came here tonight, it's because you had some sort of, it's touched your life in some way. And that's sort of the power of how HADA started. HADA started about two and a half years ago now. Peggy went to a funeral over an enunciation. It was a funeral of a 20 something year old kid who was a childhood friend of one of Peggy's kids. And Diane, as she bravely and continuously bravely mentions, you know, Diane, unfortunately, her family suffered the tragedy of losing her son to this disease. And it stemmed from those events and that tragedy. And a Facebook post was made. And the outpouring that stemmed from that simple effect is sort of how this group formed. The sign up there says, "Stop the Stigma." You know, this is a disease that has the potential, if we allow it to, to be, stay behind closed blinds, stay behind shutters, to stay locked inside where people deal with it themselves and they don't share it with each other. And what happened when that Facebook page was thrown out is that the community of Havertown, the community of Havertown Township exploded. You know, they, people reached out because so many people were touched by it. So, many people were like, "Oh, my gosh, yes, me too. I want to, I want to get involved. I want to be involved." And it's an organization that has grown organically from that. You know, it's, it's still figuring out where we're going to take this and we're going to keep having events like this. We've had a couple, we've had two or three events like this now. We'll probably have some more. It's going to continue to go to the schools for back-to-school nights and try to continue the education. And it'll focus on trying to stop the stigma in our community so that we can actively deal with it. We're going to have questions and answers tonight. And it's going to be a community discussion whereby we're going to talk about, talk about it and not hide behind the blinds and not hide behind the shutters. And we're also trying to figure out where we can take some proactive steps. Peggy mentioned the board. They also, we're going to talk about it at the end tonight. There's definitely going to be a scholarship fund whereby they're going to sponsor some residents, some township residents, when they leave a rehab or when they leave a treatment to put them in a sober housing, to give them a couple more weeks of structured living. Because what we all want is for people who are suffering from this disease of addiction to get treatment, to get help, and to have it last. We wanted to, we're going to hear a success story tonight and we want to hear more of them. That's, that's the goal. So, our panel's going to introduce themselves in a second. As I said, we're going to have a lengthy question and answer session at the end, but I just want to give you an outline of some of the things that we're going to do. First, we're lucky enough to have Jack Whelan, the district attorney in Delaware County. And he'll give you the impression of, he'll give you some of the statistics that are happening in the county and some of the programs that they're having, that they've set up. Dave White, who is on county council in Delaware County, is a great sport because he's stepping in at the last minute, but he'll give you some of the perspective and the statistics of how the county and programs throughout the, throughout the state are really changing our perspective to where we really are trying to focus on treatment because that's, that's what has to happen. People who are suffering from this disease need treatment and they need help. And that's where we have to, we have to direct the discussion. And then, we also have personal experiences. We have Jonathan Orns, who is a father of a son who suffered from the disease of addiction. And he's going to share his story with you so that we can learn from it. And then, as I said, we have a success story here. We have Ms. Monica Zach. She is, she is in active and successful recovery. Because at the end of the day, what we want you all to take away from this is that this is really not a good situation. It's everywhere. It's here, but there's ways and there is successes that can be found. And that's what we have to try to latch on to as a community. And then, Dr. Aviva Forre is going to give us some of the science and hopefully other forms of what we can do to get more people in treatment. So, that's, that's what we're going to do. We're going to, each of them are going to talk about sort of how they're, they're touched by this epidemic. Oh, excuse me, Jim McCants, I'm sorry. Our very own Havertown Township, Jim McCants. Just to highlight and stress that we're, to stop this thing. He's going to talk about what happens that he sees every day here in Havertown Township. Jim is the head of our paramedic department and he and his, his team are on the front lines every day dealing with this disease. So, what that, that's what we're going to do. Each of them are going to have five or so minutes. They're going to touch about how they're connected to the epidemic and then we're going to open it up for a discussion. So, thank you all for coming. This is, this is part of how we get to that success.
My name's Steve White. As I said, I'm a Delaware County Councilman. I'm also the co-chairman of the Heroin Task Force. I work along with our district attorney. And Heroin Task Force is made up of quite a few people throughout Delaware County that wanted to get involved and wanted to help solve this problem back in 2012. And district attorney Whelan, I'm sure, will talk about some of the programs that we've been involved with. I will also talk about some of the programs that we've been involved with that have helped a lot of people get to the road of recovery. So, thank you all for being here. I really do appreciate that.
Thanks, Steve. And of course, I'm Jack Whelan, the district attorney of Delaware County. And we're certainly looking forward to sharing some information. I don't know if five minutes is long enough for each of us, but we're going to try to keep it as short as possible.
My name's Jim McCants. I'm the director of EMS for Havertown Township. I do have a loss in my family. Lost a stepbrother to this. And I've had a great interest in pre-hospital and police and civilian use of Narcan.
Hello, everybody. My name's John Orns. I'm a center city developer, but I'm here because I raised my family here in Havertown from '88 to '06. My older son, Dan, became afflicted with this terrible disease senior year in high school. Eleven-year battle ensued. He had good times, bad times, but we lost him this past November.
Hi, everyone. My name's Monica Zach and I'm a person in long-term recovery. For me, that means I haven't had a drink or a drug since March 30th, 2015. And yeah, I'm just here to share my experience with like what's happening with recovery, especially young people in recovery in this area. I went to this high school and I've kind of stayed local, so I'm excited to share and hear some more information.
Hello. My name's Aviva Forre. I'm a physician, family medicine, and I learned about addiction while I was in residency. And once I learned about it, I decided that this was the path I wanted to follow. I am in private practice in Ardmore. I'm also a part of the Delaware County Subcommittee, the Medical Subcommittee for the Heroin Task Force. I also am very involved with the Medical Society, Delaware County Medical Society. And my objective is to educate people as much as possible about, not just the opiate epidemic, but how to speak about opiates, prescriptions with your family members, with each other, and your children especially. Thank you.
So, Jack, you won't hold it to five minutes, but if you want to start, we don't have a stopwatch, but if you don't mind.
Kevin, I'm going to stand up and address you. I don't really need the microphone and I'm sure you're not going to have a problem hearing me. But I do want to just say briefly how the Heroin Task Force started here in Delaware County. It started actually as a law enforcement initiative. We have great police officers here in Delaware County, none finest than the Havertown Township Police Department, that are putting their lives on the line every single day for you. And so, we're very proud of the Havertown Township Police Department and all of the municipal police departments and the state police here in Delaware County. But it was actually a law enforcement effort that we had the opportunity to see a mother and a daughter just crying at a police station. And the daughter was addicted to heroin. And the daughter was outselling heroin in order to feed her addiction. And I looked at those two and how pathetic the whole situation was and how much suffering that mom had done as a result of that daughter's addiction. And I went back to the county and we looked at some of the statistics that the medical examiner was giving us and we realized that we had to start the Heroin Task Force. But as Councilman White has indicated, we put together some very key people in the Heroin Task Force that we knew would be able to roll up their sleeves and be able to deliver and not just pay lip service to a task force, but to get the job done. And so, what we did is we focused on prevention, education, and awareness. And it was those goals that we were able to accomplish. And what we were looking at is the first tool is knowledge because knowledge is such a powerful weapon. And so, we knew we had to educate the students. So, we started in the middle and the high schools and we started going out. Just my office, just the district attorney's office went out there and we started to educate our kids and tell them how dangerous opioid medication and how it leads to heroin addiction. And so, what we learned pretty fast is we could not cover all of these school districts and adequately do service and educate all the kids in regard to this crazy epidemic that we saw back in 2012. So, we found out that there was a group coming out of Florida called NOPE and we partnered with NOPE. And we brought NOPE into the county. And the district attorney's office took NOPE under their umbrella and we had NOPE going out to every single high school and every single middle school trying to educate not only the kids, but the parents. And to date, over 30,000 kids have been educated through the NOPE program. But I can tell you right now, it's not enough. Today, coincidentally, we had a Heroin Task Force meeting up at the county. And Dr. Maria Edelberg, who's in charge of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, where all of our 15 school districts come together with our superintendents. And I told Dr. Edelberg today, the NOPE program is great, but it's not enough. What we need is core curriculum education in each of the schools, in middle school and in high school. We need it, whether it be through gym class or health class. We need to make sure all these kids are educated as to how dangerous opioid medication. It just can't be left up to NOPE. And I know Representative Santor is with us today and we talked about state legislators coming together and making it mandatory in curriculum dealing with opioids and heroin. And, and they're looking at that issue right now through the efforts of Representative Santor. But I think our superintendents with each of our school districts will probably come together and start some programs on a voluntary basis. So, I think it's important because if they never, ever use these drugs, they're never, ever going to be addicted and we're never going to have to face the problems that we're facing today. Also, of course, in order, on the issue of prevention and education, we've distributed drop, medicine drop boxes in every single police department in Delaware County, at the courthouse, in most of the hospitals. And now, we have a van that goes to community days and that van is picking up unused prescription medication. Why? Because our statistics tell us that 70% of the kids that use opioid medication and abuse opioid medication have done so by getting it from either grandmother's medicine cabinet or grandma's nightstand or mom and dad's medicine cabinet and nightstand. And that's how they start their experimentation. We know there's other cases where athletes get injured and they get hooked on opioids, where they get into car accidents and get hooked on opioids, or just go through surgery or illnesses and get hooked on opioids. So, we have to be aware of that, knowing where the problems are coming in in order to adequately address it. So, we got to get the medicines out of the houses that are not being used and are just sitting there because they're waiting for, in case the mom or dad or grandmother and grandpa want to use it in the future. Finally, one of the issues that the task force really prides themselves is the fact that we lobbied our legislators a few years back. And we lobbied the legislators because police officers in Pennsylvania are not allowed, as you would expect, to give out medication. Well, Narloxxin is a medication. So, we had to lobby our legislators and they came together and they passed David's Law, which was a merger of the Good Samaritan Law and the police ability to carry Narloxxin and administer Narloxxin to someone who's in an overdose state. To date, I'm proud to report to you, although it's a sad statistic, but I'm proud that our officers to date have done it almost 900 times since the law was passed. 900 times, our officers are out there giving out now nasal Narcan. The program was started here in Delaware County. And I can't say enough about our municipal police officers because they didn't have to do it. They didn't have to agree. It was a voluntary basis. We went to them, we asked them to do it, and they stepped up right away and said, "We're going to do this." They didn't back out and say, "It's not our job. It's not our job to give out medication. It's the job of EMS or it's the job of advanced life support to do that." They stood up and said, "If we can make a difference, we may be able to save a life." Because it's the police officer that typically arrives at the call before the ambulance. So, it's very, very important to have our police officers have this life-saving drug. So, once that drug is given though, we have to make sure, once it's given, that we get the individuals not only to the emergency room, but we try to get them into rehabilitation so that they're starting a rehabilitation and recovery program. Because these individuals that are getting Narloxxin are in a state where if they don't get the Narloxxin soon, they're going to die. And that's going to increase our statistics. And we have, as mentioned, some very concerning statistics. In 2005, 204 people in Delaware County died from an overdose of drugs. Only 50% of that was related to opioids or heroin. Then, we jumped to 2016. Our statistics go from 204 to 227. But what's really alarming is that 90-plus percent of that is heroin or opioids. The same statistic is today. We're about 170 overdoses as we speak tonight at the coroner's office. Over 90% of them are heroin or opioid-related. We have a problem. There's no doubt about it. We have a problem. How do we get to that problem? How do we get this far? It didn't seem like we had that, this problem 10 years ago. All of a sudden, we woke up with this problem. How did it happen? Well, I can tell you, the way it happened is prescription medication is how it happened. And the pharmaceutical companies selling the doctors a really bad bill of goods. The pharmaceutical companies told the doctors that opioid medication was not addictive. And doctors doing what they typically do, trying to help patients, trying to follow the hypocritical oath, administered or prescribed opioid medication, not realizing how serious it could be. And people, kids, young adults, middle-aged adults, became addicted by constantly taking opioids. And they've taken opioids for problems like headaches and backaches and sore throats and toothaches. You cannot do that. It's a dangerous drug, opioids. It has its purpose. It has its purpose if someone has serious surgery, has a knee replacement, has a hip replacement, or has terminal cancer. It has a very important purpose. But to use it routinely is extremely dangerous. I've been to many, many forums. I've talked to many, many parents. And it's usually in forums like this that someone will raise their hand and say to me, "Why has no one ever even broached it with the pharmaceutical company? Why has no one ever went after the pharmaceutical companies?" But ladies and gentlemen, that has changed. Delaware County Council, the county government, through the leadership of Dave White, just last week, announced the suit against the major pharmaceutical companies that are involved in the production of OxyContin, Percocet, Vicodin, all of your major opioid drugs because of the deception and deceit that they have, that has occurred and the information they're providing to the doctors. If you go online, I think the lawsuit is online. And if you read that lawsuit, it reads like a book. There's 280 paragraphs in this lawsuit. And this lawsuit details how the pharmaceutical companies caused the problem in deceptive information to the doctors and other medical personnel. We are hoping that it wakes up the pharmaceutical companies and they reform their conduct, they reform their behavior, and they start contributing money to people that need it in recovery and treatment. Let the pharmaceutical companies help the government pay for some of the problems that these families are experiencing. You know, it's horrible. The worst thing that can possibly happen is you lose a child. There is no greater pain. There is no greater anguish. The worst thing I've ever done as the district attorney, or I ever had to do, was to sit with a parent or knock on the door of a parent and tell that parent that their child was dead. It is horrible. I never, ever, ever want to do it again. I never even want to talk about it. I have four kids of my own and but for the grace of God, they're not addicted. They're not better than anyone. It's just a time where we have to say to them, "You can't touch opioid medication." And that's how concerning it is. But it's only through the grace of God that they don't experiment in it or they didn't get it involved in a football injury or a cross-country or track injury. Only by the grace of God has that occurred. But there were so many parents and so many families out there that are suffering. They're suffering with a child who is inflicted with this disease now. And then, they're suffering when they lose that child because the child is overdosed. Because now, the child, what happens is, once they finish or stop taking the opioids because they can't get them anymore, if they go to the black market and try to get them, it's $25 a pill. But they turn to heroin, it's $5 a bag. It's all it costs to get a little packet of heroin and to get their high. But what's the problem? Heroin's not coming from the FDA-approved facility. Heroin's coming from China or it's coming from South America and it's being made in a clandestine lab. And you know what? It's not heroin anymore. It's fentanyl. And fentanyl is killing our kids. And the kids don't know, when they're putting this in their system, that it's mixed with fentanyl or what the percent of fentanyl is. And since the 70s, back in the 70s, when you heard about heroin, the purity of heroin was about 10%, 15% on a good day. Today, what our police are finding on the street is 90% pure heroin, much more powerful than ever before. But it's worse because now it's cut with fentanyl, so it makes it 100 and plus times more. And now, we're worried about car fentanyl, which is 1,000 times more powerful than heroin. It's very, very dangerous. We have to work together. We have to unite to accomplish the goals of the Heroin Task Force, which is going beyond prevention, education, and awareness. And now, it's dealing with treatment and recovery. And so, tonight, I want to cut my comments short and open it up for questions after the panel addresses you. But I want to take the opportunity to introduce the next speaker. And the next speaker works with me on a daily basis. The next speaker has rolled up his sleeves on the Heroin Task Force and is dealing with so many different issues and has expanded the role of the Heroin Task Force. The next speaker, we sat down and we knew that prevention, education, and awareness is not enough. We got to do more on the Heroin Task Force. So, what are we doing? We now moved into treatment and recovery because it's so important. Because we have to help those that are inflicted with this disease. And so, I'm introducing to you, the next speaker is my friend and longtime councilman, a person that has been able to get results, a person that's been able to take on the pharmaceutical companies, and a person that has been a key, key supporter of treatment, recovery, and dealing with addiction issues. And that's Councilman Dave White. Dave?
Thank you, Jack. I'm not going to use the microphone either. Jack and I often get called the Megaphone Mavs. So, I don't think you'll have a problem here, either one of us. As the district attorney stated, the Heroin Task Force started back in 2012 because we saw the need to get the message out. And as Jack Whelan stated, it started with education. As was stated earlier, we were not going to hide our position, saying, "We knew there was a problem." And we were the first county to get a Heroin Task Force put together so we could hit this problem head-on. Since then, we've had many programs. And one program that has been very successful, Jack Whelan had mentioned, is the drug take box, uh, take back boxes that are in every police station and the government center, as Jack stated. So, I'm going to ask everyone here tonight, and every event we go to, and we do a lot of these events, I ask you of these events, I ask the same question. I want you all to go home tonight, and you can be part of the solution tonight. If you go home tonight, you go in your medicine drawers, you go in your medicine cabinets, you go in your block office, any prescription drug that you are not using, that is not needed, any of those drugs. I want you to grab them, I want you to bring them down to Chief Viola in the Harper Police Station, I want you to put them in that drop box, so we can get rid of them. That's how you, tonight, can be part of a solution. Because let me tell you what happens. Someone gets a prescription, they're prescribed an opioid. They may use one, they may use two, may not use any of them. But they think, "I'll put them in the medicine cabinet, I might need them later. Maybe, maybe down the road, I'll use them." Your kids, your grandkids, they come by, and they're very smart. They come by, they come in your house, they go through your medicine cabinets, they don't, they don't empty it, you'll never know. They take out two, three, six, 10 of them, put them back in your medicine cabinet, they leave. Then, if your, your son, your daughter, your grandchild's using them, they're going to his house, they're doing the same thing. And they're either taking these, or they're selling them. As the district attorney stated, they're $25 or $30 a pill. That's a lot of money to someone that's in high school, a lot of money to somebody who's in college. And it helps feed their addiction. So, tonight, you can help get rid of these pills, and I need you guys to do this. This is a fact. 70% of those on heroin start with a pill. District Attorney Whalen said in many of these previews, these meetings, no one wakes up in the morning and says, "I'm gonna take a needle of heroin, or I'm gonna snort heroin." They don't start that way. They start on opioids. They start with a pill, they become addicted, the pills become too expensive, they find out they can get a high, instead of $25 or $30 a pop, they can get a high for $5. They go get a bag of heroin, and it goes downhill from there, even worse than the addiction of opioids. And that's where we got the problem with the heroin addiction. We found this out very early. So, we did start many programs. And district attorney has to really take lead and credit for getting Narcan or Narloxxin to be allowed, to be, to be administered by our police departments. And because of that, as he has stated, we saved over 900 lives because of his efforts, working with the state legislature. Jamie has been on the forefront of this issue, working with the Heroin Task Force, working with Delaware County, and working with the district attorney's office. And that's a great relationship we have in the state. And that's what we need, is everyone on board. We're not gonna fix this problem unless everyone is moving in the same direction. So I give a lot of credit to Jamie, I appreciate everything he's done. But after we saved 900 lives, we realize, we're saving lives, we need, we need a better road for them. We need to get them on the road to recovery. Saving them's not enough. But we, we need to get them on a road to recovery. So, the Heroin Task Force initiated Certified Recovery Specialists. We went, we got a grant, and we hired two certified recovery specialists. Now, they work for us, and the only thing their responsibility is, is to go visit those that have suffered an overdose, go to the emergency room, meet with these people that have overdosed, try to get them into a recovery program, and try to help them through the red tape of insurance. If they don't have insurance, we'll help you with state financing or federal financing. We will get you into a program and into a bed. That is what our goal is. Our program started with two certified recovery specialists. We had a town meeting, Commissioner Demilio, it was just last week, and I made a comment, we were up to three last week. Two weeks ago, we went up to six. We now have six certified recovery specialists in Delaware, in Delaware County. Made a comment last week, we're up to five calls a day. We're up to over 10 calls a day for these certified recovery specialists. That's a good adventure. At least, I think it's getting, the message is getting to people that were out there, "We wanna help. If you wanna help yourself, we will be there to help you." So, we're getting 10 calls a day, six certified recovery specialists. Now, they're not just going, we've expanded their role as well. We're not just waiting for them to go, and we're not just waiting for an overdose. Any family that is in crisis, any family that needs to meet with them, we will send them to your home. We're trying to be proactive, we're not trying to wait to the end, we're trying to get that started. That program's been incredibly successful, and we will continue that program, no matter how many recovery specialists we need. We found another, another program we started was Second Chance Courts. We found what was happening, a lot of the addicts, in order to, to buy the heroin, buy the pills, they were breaking into cars, doing petty thefts. Whether it be cars, doing shoplifting, that's how they were getting their money. And by the time they were arrested, and the time they went to court immediately, six or eight months lasted. And in that six or eight months, what do you think they're doing? They're right back again, they're in that revolving door, they're, they're stealing, they're going out, they're getting high, they're using these opioids, and they're back in the same problem. So, we started at the district attorney's office, we started what we call Second Chance Court. What happens now, as soon as you go into the district justice, you get arrested, you get arraigned right at the district justice, uh, uh, courts, that's a day or two, hours sometimes, when you're arrested. As part of your bail, part of your bond, we will give you an opportunity to go into recovery at that moment. We will help you get into a bed, we will help you start on your road to recovery. If you fail to follow through on that recovery, your bond gets revoked. But you need to wanna do that. That's called Second Chance Courts. Every district justice in Delaware County is on board with it, every judge at the Court of Commerce is on board with it. It's been an incredibly successful program. We are finding so many people that don't want to get in that revolving door, don't want to go back through that door. They want to get on that road to recovery. If they're willing to do it, we're willing to help them. Peggy just mentioned Brian Corson is one of your board members. Brian Corson's been a great advocate for us, he's on the Heroin Task Force as well. He and his wife Chrissy came in to see the district attorney, Whalen and myself, about two months ago. And what was happening, people that were on a road to recovery, that were in long-term recovery, were having problems getting a job. And it wasn't just people having a problem. Women were having the greatest problem. Men, a lot of them are going through recovery, and a lot of them are in the trades. And they're having an easier, easier time getting a drop job back in the trades. Women, because during their addiction, they were stealing, they were robbing, they were doing these petty, petty thefts, if you will, crimes, petty crimes, have, have a record. Very hard to go into a bank or an office. They would interview terrifically. And then they'd do a background check, and the door was slammed in their face. Can you imagine being on recovery, nine months clean, you think you've got an opportunity, you've got a great chance for a job, and every door was slammed in your face? It was putting them down, it was putting them back to where they didn't want to be. So, we started a new program, this was just about six weeks ago, Second Chance Employment. It's a pilot program, and Delaware County, again, is the first to do this. We saw the need, Brian and Chrissy Corson came in, they asked for our help, we put the Office of Workforce Development with the Chamber of Commerce. And EDSI, which is a program, an ad hoc program that helps young ladies, our, these young ladies, get the skills needed to go for job interviews. They put together their resumes, and we're helping them get job placement. The Chamber of Commerce has been a great help and partner with the Heroin Task Force. We are reaching out to the Chamber many times, and finding out, many of the members of the Chamber, I'm sure it's not hard to believe, have relatives or friends or neighbors that they know what happens with addiction. And they understood what's happening. If I can tell you, the first time, three weeks ago, when they, the program started, we're starting with 16 women, they had tears in their eyes. Because they finally saw hope and opportunity. They finally saw their chance to make a great contribution to our society. They're the programs that we're trying to put forth. We started, as the district attorney stated, we started with education. We didn't, never knew where we were gonna go. We started a Realtor program. And a Realtor, we have a Realtor on the Heroin Task Force, and I'll tell you a quick story. We found this out very quickly. In the beginning, back in 2012, we found out that what was happening in open houses, a, someone was going in pretending to be a husband or wife or a couple, and while one of them had a Realtor walking around, the other was going through the medicine cabinets and medicine doors and stealing the opioids for sale. We found that out, I think, within three or four months of us starting the Heroin Task Force. So, we put a Realtor on our task force. Jack just went, I think it was last week, to talk to the Realtors in Chester County about this problem. But we started a program back in 2012 to teach the Realtors in Delaware County. Treat your opioids and your medicine, your prescription medicine like you would a gun. You wouldn't leave a gun, you wouldn't leave your jewelry on the bed, or in an open drawer, door in an open house. Treat your medicine the same way. You put it away, you lock it up, and tonight, after tonight, I know you're all gonna go home, you're gonna put it in a bag, and you're gonna throw it out. That's even more important. We still have some other initiatives that we are putting together. We still know we have a long road to go. I, I know we're gonna win the battle, we don't, and we're gonna win this war, and I've said this 100 times, because we have no choice. We are losing 2 to 250 people a year to this. We have no choice but to do everything we can to stop them. And we are gonna continue that, through the district attorney's office, working with Jamie Santore up at the, at the State House, work with Delaware County Council, work with the Chamber. We will partner with everyone, working with our police department, so Don, as Jack has said, an incredible job. We will continue our efforts, and I guarantee you, we will win this war on this epidemic. So, thank you for being here, thank you for caring enough to be here tonight, and please, as I stated when I started this, tonight, one thing, get your medicines out of your house and bring them down to the police station. Thanks.
Logan, everybody. Show of hands, who has children in the high school level right now? In the middle school level? Elementary school? I'm wondering where everybody else is. Preaching to the choir here, I think. Can you put the slideshow up? It's not much of a slideshow, but it's just a couple of points. Can everybody hear me better? Once you get it, give me a shout. My son, point, because I don't have my, I still. My son was a good person, he was a good kid. He was a good child, even when he became a teenager, he was a good teenager. And it was his senior year that it became apparent that he had a problem. And although he ensued on an 11-year battle with this, he was a good person. The first half of that timeframe, he wasn't. A lot of people, I hear this a lot, "What has happened to my child? He's turned into a monster." At least the second half of that tenure, he, his attitude changed from, "Too bad, this is the way I am, deal with it," to, "I'm so sorry." Okay, now, that's him, he doesn't look like somebody with a drug addiction, does he? Handsome, strapping, muscular. Next one. You can see by the dates that he's not with us anymore. A lot of people have told me about this picture, that they can see in his face what a nice, sweet, gentle, kind person he was, but also the challenges that he had in life, these terrible challenges from this disease. You had... Now, this picture, believe it or not, was taken before the first two pictures I took up there. I showed you there. This was maybe the end of '11, the other ones were '12 and '13. I took this picture, he was in a hospital at the time, and he was sleeping it off, so to speak. I wasn't too concerned, because he was in a hospital setting. But I did take that picture. This is a man at the end of his rope. This, believe it or not, was the worst place that he ever was, far worse than the night that he died last year. He was not that far down the road last year when he died. But it is interesting that when I do these presentations, and I put these three pictures up, and I do say, "The hope is active addiction, active recovery." And those recovery pictures, which were taken after this picture, shows you how powerful our bodies and our spirits can be. I don't know how, quite sure how he started, not sure whether it was just social experimentation, getting high with friends, maybe he had a painkilling situation, I know he had a nose job, maybe he became addicted then, maybe he was just dealing with the stress of turning into a teenager. And that is a very stressful world for these kids right now, and it's, the stress can get to kids also. It also could have been that he, some type of malfeasive behavior, that maybe he did at a very young age, that he kept to himself and harbored, harbored. And it led to, to this demise. Now, I'm gonna say something now, and some of you might accuse me of trying to scare you, and you're right, I will. But just to bring it home, what you don't want to go through is what I went through when you get the phone call. And there's not a whole lot of time to mentally or emotionally prepare for this phone call. I knew he was struggling, we thought he had a handle on things, I did speak to him earlier that day, but the phone rings, you pick it up, and we're not talking about days, we're not talking about hours, not even talking about minutes, we're talking about barely seconds. Five seconds, my life changed. Pick up the phone, he passed away. That's all it takes. Driving out to the destination where he lived, luckily, someone was driving me, walking down the hallway towards his apartment, I felt like I was walking into the valley of the shadow of death. Walking in to his bedroom and seeing about eight or nine police officers and paramedics standing around him quietly, seeing his lifeless body laying there like he was asleep, holding his hand, you know how cold it was. The next day, telling his younger brother, who happens to be here tonight, what happened, which was every bit as hard as seeing him laying there, dead on the floor, having to look over his casket, a couple days later, make promises, having to wake up over the ensuing months, wondering if it was all a bad dream, and then realizing it wasn't. These are things that we, as parents, should not have to go through. And, and our hope is that you won't have to. I went through it, Diane went through it. And if you ask, our hope is that we don't want anybody else to go through this. One of the reasons I've come out here, to do this. Some basic recommendations I'll throw out, in addition to what was already suggested here. I think children should be psychologically evaluated every year. We have them physically evaluated. You know, we take them to the doctor, to the pediatrician, but frankly, the pediatrician's just checking them out from the neck down. Is anybody evaluating what's going on in their minds? If they have any traits that may lead to some type of addictive behavior, maybe they're, they did something that they've harbored, and they don't want to tell their parents that maybe a specialist can squeeze out of them. I try to tell people, "Don't confuse your child with your younger self." People say, "When I was younger, I used to get high and drunk, and that was it. Why can't he, or she?" Well, they're not you, and we are in a different world than we were 20, 30 years ago. I wouldn't take innocuous drug use, you know, lightly at all. I would not drink in front of your kids. I would not drink in front of your kids, I would try not even to smoke cigarettes in front of your kids. Jeez, when it comes to prescribed medicine, I would stay on top of that like a hawk if they're needed, as they suggested. These medicines, and I've said this before, medications are designed to manage pain, not to eradicate pain. But we're in a, we're very, in a society where we have no tolerance at all for pain. Pain is supposed to be a good thing, it's your body telling you that something's wrong. If you use these painkillers, in addition to what it's doing to your, your body and your brain, you're now out there physically walking around hurting yourself possibly some more. I look into whatever insurance you make, medical insurance, to see if there could be potential drug or alcohol coverage. I would definitely be cognizant of your children's stress levels. There are a couple of books or movies that I recommend, I'm not gonna mention them now, that I think are real poignant. These are just basic things that I kinda recommend to young parents. Because I will tell you, when I was a young parent, when my kids were entering middle school, this was the furthest thing from my mind, the last concern I had. I was out in Havertown, I wasn't, we weren't living in North Philadelphia or Kensington, this is Havertown. Never in a million years did I think this would happen. God forbid, in the event that your child does have a problem, you know, my tagline is "Welcome to hell, but you're not alone." And, you know, I, I just, it's better than the alternative, which is what I had to face. One thing, I think of as extreme importance, your love for your child alone will not defeat this. Love needs, I used to think, if I could just show him how much I loved him, what I was trying to do for him, that would change the way he would look at the world. This drug is way too powerful for that. Love needs a lot of help, it needs help from hope, faith, patience, education, psychology, probably pharmaceuticals on a regular basis, and a lot of understanding. And when I say understanding, understand this, no pun intended. After looking like, after going through that, and then coming into recovery and doing so well, why on earth would he pick up again? And I used to say to him, "Why would you pick up again? You know what you've been through, you see how well you're doing now." And he used to say to me, because he was in eleven rehabs, twelve rehabs, in and out, rehabs, jails, whatever, he said to me, "I don't know what got in my head that made me pick up again." And me not understanding, figured, "That's just a cop-out, that's just you trying to justify going out and getting high and having fun." No, but he was telling the truth. There was a circuit breaker in his head that was so weak, and a lot of our children have weak circuit breakers in our head, most of them are strong, like maybe yours and mine, but it just flicks for no apparent reason. "I don't know what got in my head that made me do that." That's where the understanding is important to, to come in. Also to recognize the limitations. Right now, the way we're battling this is with rehabs and with, you said, naloxone. These are vital for this fight, but you gotta understand the limitations. Rehabs really can only do two things. I should, and I don't mean that to be disparaging. They'll detox your child, if they need detox, and they're gonna point them in the right direction. That's pretty much all they can do in a twenty-eight-day period. I don't want anybody to think that, once your child goes into rehab, you could feel like I did twelve years ago, "Thank God, he's in rehab, now he'll be fine." It doesn't work that way. It's a long haul, until, hopefully sooner or later, they can get a handle on it, like the young lady next to me. And also, with, with regard to naloxone, naloxone has one important, huge, enormous job, and that's to keep you alive in the event you overdose. And should it be in every household? Absolutely, it should. But nobody should think, "Well, I have naloxone at home, now I feel safer, I feel fine." Naloxone will not stop your child from becoming a drug addict, and will not stop your child from ODing. What it will do is keep your child alive in the event that they OD. And that's important to recognize, what its role, it's got an important role, but that's all it is, it's not gonna prevent. It's a lot more work than just naloxone. In a nutshell, this is the worst disease of all diseases. This is the only disease that will make people lie, steal, cheat, and manipulate the people they love. And if we're gonna beat this, like, like he said, I, you know, we will beat this, because now I think we're all, as a society, becoming committed. Not gonna be easy, though, and there's some basics. One off is just to, this whole de-stigmatization, that we shouldn't refer to anybody as a drug addict, we should refer to them as somebody with addiction. If somebody has cancer, we don't refer to them as "a cancer," we say "they have cancer." To call somebody a drug addict is very labeling and humiliating, it adds to the stigma. You know, when somebody has cancer, they're diagnosed as positive or negative, but if somebody has a drug addiction, they're diagnosed as dirty or clean. You see the problem with our stigmatization. I do feel that, that what's happening this past year, a revolution is starting, a good one, to try to combat this, is try to help these people the best we can for this generation, and make sure this doesn't happen for our next coming generation. Thank you.
As I mentioned, my name's Monica, and I'm a person in long-term recovery for about the past two and a half years. I just wanna take a moment to thank Hatta for doing this, and all you guys for being here, and the other panelists. It's really, like, really quite moving to be here with parents and teachers and community members in, in my high school, kinda talking about addiction, because I grew up in this area, and I grew up with other family members that struggled with addiction or mental illness in various forms, and it's something that is really hard to talk about. It's really hard to get people to talk about it. Even being out there now as an advocate, it's like, it's hard to start these conversations, so it's really powerful to be here and to hear our, you know, our government officials and our people just talking openly about what we're gonna do to stop the stigma and fight this disease. A little bit about my, my personal story is that I did grow up here in Havertown my whole life. I went to Sacred Heart Catholic School, and I went to Havford High School. I was always a pretty successful young kid. I did well in school, always at the top of my class. I played sports, I, I had friends, was always kinda like a normal kid. I had a very lovely family, you know, of all the, all that. I had every intention of never drinking, never using drugs, like I, it just was something that, after seeing certain other people in my family struggle, I never wanted to go near. But that being said, at the same time, as much as I had a lot of friends or played a lot of sports or did really well in school, there was always a little part of me that was always extremely uncomfortable in my own skin. And that was something that I don't think I ever really talked about. But looking back, as like, now that I've been in recovery and trying to tell my story, like, looking back, I struggled with, you know, the earliest one was body image stuff and like eating problems as early as middle school, like really trying to, to feel like I could control my weight and feel a little bit better about myself. And I entered high school thinking I wouldn't, still thinking I wouldn't ever drink or kinda get into any of that stuff, but as soon as an opportunity was presented to drink at a party, and I just, I just took it. I don't know, something about that, that flip-switching, an opportunity to feel less uncomfortable in an uncomfortable situation. And that first night, I just, my story is that I was always a blackout drinker. I always could never have enough of that feeling that made me feel relieved and more comfortable in my skin. So I continued, I began my drinking career at that point, when I was about fourteen or fifteen in high school. And no major consequences or anything crazy at first. A little bit of like weed and continuing to drink, always being a blackout drinker in a partier, but doing fine in school, getting into college, always having a job. And drinking was just something that I did, you know, in my free time to kinda unwind. And it really, as much as I didn't, like, I still, I still didn't want to be drinking, or I didn't always wanna be doing the things that I was doing. I mean, I would be in dangerous situations even, even that young, where I would be in a position to be taken advantage of, or to be woken up in like a state where I was, you know, sitting up in my own vomit like that, you know, like, things that were scary and like, that didn't make me feel like I was where I wanted to be. But I, I didn't know, I didn't know about this disease, I didn't know that these were symptoms of a disease. I just, you know, the, the benefits for me of feeling more comfortable in my own skin and socially at this time completely outweighed any possible like dangers or anything like that. And that began this trend of having a sort of double life, where, you know, my morals and my goals and my aspirations were on one side, and the things that I would be willing to do to feel relieved were, were on the other side. So I, I ended up going to Penn State main campus for my first two years of undergraduate. I was, I did fine, I, I got like arrested there for a fake ID, and be, you know, just was very unhappy. My drinking and my mental health, for me, was always like a combination of like partying and, and mental health. Be struggling with suicidal thoughts and never sharing this with anyone, and really only finding relief in those, in the, in the partying. So for one reason or another, I thought I would be happier if I transferred schools, if I came home, if I was in Philadelphia, and I came back home and finished my education at Drexel here in the city and lived with my mom in Havertown, commuted, and pretty much more of the same. I tried to go to grad school, I got into grad school, and did one semester in two thousand twelve in a master's program, and that's kinda when I just began to drop off. I was there, and I just could not maintain anymore that like persona that was ambitious or motivated any longer. I just was too unhappy, and I still didn't realize that there was any sort of problem with like my drinking or drug use or anything, I just was unhappy. And like through, as many other times, like I just thought if I made a move or changed my, like, changed schools or changed programs or changed relationships, like I would eventually feel better. So I made the decision to leave school, and that's when things started to get a little bit darker for me. After, after that time, I like moved to California for a little bit, inexplicably, just to sort of like hang out and, you know, change the scenery kinda thing. Ended up coming home and living in an apartment away from my family in East Falls, and that's, that's when things got a lot worse for me, where I started experimenting with like harder substances, mixing it with the way I was drinking and using already, and just, just began really being in situations that were, that were horrible. And I could no longer sort of rationalize or control the kinds of situations that I was putting myself in. My mental health was getting much, much worse, the suicidal thoughts and feelings were getting much stronger, and I was just beginning to really lose any sense of hope. My story, I'm very like blessed and lucky that I, I knew through the grapevine of other people, actually, another girl that graduated the same year as me from Havford. I knew that she had already been sober for a year. And I had like ex-boyfriends and friends that were sort of dropping to rehab and starting to like be supposed to go into meetings and things like that. So I kinda knew about, you know, meetings that people were going to, and I ended up meeting this girl for, girl for coffee from Havford. And I could just see what a different person she was than when we went to high school together. I didn't even know her, I don't think, during the worst of her addiction, but I just could see how different she was, how confident and happy and how, how well she was doing. So that wasn't quite the end, but I, I had a couple nights where I was very, very suicidal, and I no longer, I just, I hit an emotional bottom, and I'm like grateful that that was, that was what happened for me. I feel really lucky that that was my bottom. But I was able to reach out to a friend, you know, after, you know, on March thirtieth, two and a half years ago, and just sort of reached my hand out. I told my mom that I didn't feel safe living alone in my apartment any longer, I didn't feel safe like being alone with myself. And I asked her if I could come home, so I did. I came home, and I started going to meetings every day, and that was my, that was my entrance into recovery. Just, I started going to twelve-step fellowship meetings every day, started working a program, having a sponsor, going through the steps, all that good stuff, that I think is pretty much what people are told to do in rehab. And that's what, that's what saved my life. It was a pretty, pretty quick change as far as just all that discomfort I always had in my own skin, having a hard time socially, feeling a part of, feeling any kinda like happiness or contentment within myself, like that really started to melt away. There are so many young, thriving, wonderful young people in recovery in Delaware County and in the Philadelphia area, that they just sort of swept me up, and they showed me how they were living, they showed me that it's possible to have a good life as a young person in recovery, to have fun as a young person in recovery. And because I was so desperate, I just, I trusted them, and I feel really grateful for that and that I've been able to, to continue working a program and be staying on that path for the past two and a half years. In that time, I've been able to go back to school and complete my master's degree in public health from Drexel, and to get involved with an organization called Young People in Recovery. We're a local nonprofit advocacy organization, and we really work to provide pro-social events to young people in recovery in the community, to kinda, to change the stigma and to advocate for increased resources, especially at the educational level. We were involved in a bill that provided funding for the Bridgeway High School, which is a recovery high school in Manayunk. And also, our big push now is we're trying to get a bill in Pennsylvania that all of the state universities are gonna be required to provide funding for collegiate recovery, substance-free housing, and those kinda recovery supports on college campuses, because it's such a huge problem. We see so many really, really young people coming in with addiction problems already, and like in order to kinda get better and have a better life, they really need to have an education. But, you know, going to high school and college can be very, you know, an unfriendly environment to be sober and to be living the kinda lives they need to be leading to stay on that path. So we're really working to kind of, to change that dynamic and to make it so it's safer and easier and healthier for young people to go back to school. So that's kinda, that's kinda my story.
So I want you all to do me a favor. I want you to imagine that you're in a desert. You're walking through this desert, and you've been here for probably days, and you're thirsty, and you're hungry, and you don't really know where you're going. You're wandering through this desert, and ahead of you you see this shimmering pond. So you walk up to the pond, and all you can think of is, "I am dying of thirst, all I want is to drink." And there's a small sign in front of the pond, and it says, "Poison." And you look at it, and you think, "It's probably there for a reason. If I drink from this water, I will probably die." Most of us would probably choose to keep going, in the hope that we find something, and choose not to drink from that pond. I want you to think of addiction and people who struggle with the disease of addiction as someone who does not have the capacity to make that decision. I describe to many of the people that I work with as having the two parts of our brain. We have this back part of our brain, I call the lizard brain, and it's a very primitive part of our brain. All it wants to do is survive. It's our survival brain, and that's the part of the brain that pushes a lot of behavior and addiction. From part of your brain... Sure, sorry. Did you hear the whole pond story? Okay, I'll do it shorter. So imagine you're in, in the desert, you're very thirsty. You get to a pond, and the pond has a sign on it that says "Poison." And you recognize that if you drink from this pond, no matter how thirsty you are, that you're certainly gonna die. Most of us would continue going through the desert in the hopes that we find something else, knowing that if we drank from that, we would die. I want you to think about the disease of addiction as this inability to make a decision that's gonna potentially save our lives. In other words, addiction draw is driven by a part of our brain that its only purpose is survival. And despite knowing better, which is where you use the front part of your brain, you make good decision-making, people can't make that decision. Let me jump, jump ahead for a second. Peggy just introduced me to someone, and she said something that really struck me. She said, "This is Dr. Forrest, she's a physician that works in addiction, and she's never going to..." Her business is booming, and she's never gonna be short of clients that she sees, and it's true. It's, I didn't go into medicine thinking that this is what I was gonna do. I actually am a family doctor, I was gonna deliver babies. I wanted to bring people into this world. And it's sort of an interesting twist that I ended up being on a different side of that, trying to keep people in this world. But one of the things, you know, we've heard a lot of really true comments about addiction, a lot of true comments about what we need to combat this battle, fight this disease, fight the heroin epidemic. I look at it in a very simplistic way. We're all at fault, all of us, yes. Physicians, certainly at fault. There's a lot of physicians that either aren't educated or were misinformed and prescribed opiates, benzodiazepines, stimulants. I'm gonna put all of those in the same category. They all get prescribed inadvertently, that's true. put all of those in the same category, they all get prescribed inadvertently, that's true. But we as people who go in to see physicians are also responsible for taking some accountability for what we do. I'm a mom of three kids, two in middle school, two in elementary school, one in middle school. My eight-year-old knows what drugs are and he knows that a prescription medication prescribed by a doctor and taken by someone can also be a drug. I feel that as parents, as husbands, wives, aunts, uncles, siblings, we're also responsible for educating people about the dangers of drugs, not just heroin, not just illicit drugs, but also prescription drugs. I think we're responsible for talking to pediatricians about what kind of conversations are they having with our children. I feel that we should talk to providers, not only dentists, primary care providers, orthopedics, all of those, about what kind of medications are they prescribing and how much are they prescribing, but also to take some accountability for what, what we ask for. We're a society that's definitely driven by, we should have no pain instead of how tolerable is your pain. So here I find myself seeing people day after day that look like you, that look like me, that look like many of you, and it's heartbreaking because yeah, addiction is, it's a disease that thrives in secrecy, it's a disease that thrives in shame. Definitely some of the verbiage we use perpetuates that, I really, I'm, I'm a big stickler for semantics, so when people come in and they have substances in their urine, I talk about having positive substances in your urine, you're not dirty, you're not clean. I also really like the, to emphasize the concept of people are struggling with this disease. If you came to me and I was your family doctor and you were struggling with high blood pressure or diabetes, we would talk about medication management, it certainly has an important role, but support, like 12-step also has a role, education has a role, and all of those together really help fight this, but it's a disease and it's a chronic disease just like any other chronic disease. We as, speaking for the medical community as a whole, many of my colleagues haven't quite grasped that concept yet and really do struggle with working with people in addiction. And I think the society as a whole has difficulty struggling with that. I don't, I'm very proud of what I do, I'm not shy about it, I tell people what I do and it's very rare for me to tell someone that I'm a physician that works with addiction that I don't hear from them, either a personal story or someone that they know. And really what I'd like to be is a resource as far as what's out there for medications, what's out there for support, what's out there for treatment, because definitely inpatient treatment is just the beginning, but we really need to realize that like any other chronic disease, this needs to be addressed on every level, active disease, early in recovery, prolonged recovery, and then how to stay in recovery. So, that's about it.
Move it loud also. My name is Jimmy Kins and I am the Director of Emergency Medical Services here. And you've heard a lot tonight, and I think the only thing I can offer you now, I can, I can obviously add stories, I can tell you about the parents and, and the rescuers and the police that are getting worn down because of taking care of people, they're doing CPR and, and ventilating and, and giving Narcan and trying to save the lives of people their age or younger, it's not how it's supposed to work. It's supposed to be saving people that are older. You know, this seven-year-old guy has a heart attack and, and those people, it's not supposed to be this group, the average age in Delaware County, including Haverford Township, is thirty-four years old for whatever it is, thirty-four. Oh, we have plenty of twenty-year-olds, but we also have plenty of sixty-year-olds and it's running the whole gamut. After hearing a lot of these talks, after serving on the heroin task force for, for a while and, and I sat there, I said, "You know, what can I offer?" And I thought back to my experiences with my stepbrother Jimmy. I said, "You know what, let me think about this." Jimmy, by the way, was the, he was just the best guy to go have fun with. He was always funny, he was always upbeat, he was always a good time, and that was always part of the problem, is they never wanted to believe he had a problem, because I think I kind of leaned on him. You know, if it was a bad week, Jim, what are you doing? "I don't know, what do you want to do? Let's go someplace, let's go have some fun." And he was that guy. Now I coupled my experiences personally with him and what I see from parents and family members and, and what I hear from other rescuers and what I hear from the police and it's kind of coming together. What tools can I hand to, to the rest of us, to those who are living with somebody or worried that we're living with somebody or just have no idea? "Well, how would you know? Should I just have Narcan in my house just in case? I, I don't know what, what I should do." Well, it started to dawn on me that people have seen signs for a long time, I started hearing these stories from mothers and fathers, and when I heard these, I said, "You know what, let's start talking about this." A lot of it had to do with the lie that comes along with this. You're spot on, to have an addiction and perpetuate it, you have to develop skills as a great liar. Jimmy was lying to me a lot, but I wanted to believe him, just like you want to believe your family members or, or, or anybody that, that you're close to, you want to believe them telling you the truth. So when Jimmy told his mother, "Somebody broke in while you're on vacation," she wanted to believe that the house was actually broken into. It wasn't. We know what happened later on. The child who goes away to school in upstate Pennsylvania and calls his dad and says, "Dad, somebody stole my laptop and I need a new laptop." Dad sends him the cash. Couple of months later, this is coming from the recovering, the person who recovers telling me this story. He said, "A couple of months later, I called my dad, because I was out of cash, and I said, 'Um, Dad, somebody slashed the tires on my car. I can't get the class.'" His father said, "You know, I know somebody out there who works for one of the tire companies. He's taking care of you, go to this shop, I already paid for the tires." His son says, he said, "It hit me, it was a panic button went on and I went into the line mode, I said, 'Dad, great, but my buddy Lou, who I give a ride to, already put the tires on the car, I gotta pay him back.'" None of it was true. So these stories build. Now, have, some of the mothers I've dealt with said they have found needles like this. Once they found it in the pocket of their son's jeans while they were doing the wash. They pull it out, they said, "Son, what is this?" He said, "Oh, it's my friend, he's a diabetic and he left it in the car and he wanted to get stuck, so I put it in my pocket." Another story I heard from a parent was, "You know, it was outside where the kids ride their bikes and the, the kids I picked up, I put it in my pocket, I said, 'I don't want a kid to get stuck.'" "Oh, really? If that was like a nasty tissue laying there, would you have picked it up and stuck it in your pocket? No, would you just, you put a needle in your pocket?" Parents were, "Well, you know what, wow, that was nice, you didn't like, can't get hurt by that." Or, "Oh, your buddy's a diabetic? Okay." That's a lie, because your buddy's a diabetic doesn't need his insulin emergently. The situation for, for the use of insulin, you have to take it with him someplace in traveling, but the emergent situation where somebody had to break out something in a car or whatever is on the other side, they would need sugar to go the other direction. So like a bunch of candy bars sitting there saying, "Hey, his sugar was low, he needed to, to chat down some sugar." That would be the emergent side. So this is a lie. I had one mother said, "I saw this cat, this orange thing floating in the toilet." It floats, well, things are float, sometimes don't flush really well, and there it was. "Oh, yeah, Mom, you know, I saw, I don't know what that was. I tossed it, I, I threw it in the toilet, I don't know what..." No, it's a lie. These little packets, and these are provided to me, they are clean ones from CID, I want you to see them. Either somebody's ordering the world's smallest egg rolls or they're on heroin, it's one or the other. And this is how it's packaged, this is how it comes, and you can see that when this is over. Either the teeny-tiny little sandwich was ordered or they're actually getting, this is how their heroin comes, in these little Ziploc bags. I didn't even know you could make anything that small. The bent spoon, I'll admit, I was ignorant to it, a police officer in Haverford explained it to me, I'm like, "What is with the burnt bent spoon thing?" Well, heroin comes as a crystal, like a powder, and when you put in a spoon, back in the old days, it was so impure, as you heard just a little bit earlier, they would add a little water to it and then they would have to cook it a little bit, put a lighter underneath it and get it to melt. So that all those impurities and everything would become, and would go into liquid form, they'd take a little piece of cotton, a little piece of tissue, and it would stick in and they'd pull back the needle and then they squirt it into their veins. And then we'd get these terrible marks because they're putting basically a boiling liquid into their veins because they were so desperate. But why is it this bent? Because you can't do all that, you see, I couldn't sit here and do it. So if you bend the spoon, it'll sit flat, this way. If you've noticed the spoons like on your counter in your drawers at home, a teaspoon where you sit it down, it sits up, it's so water doesn't collect in it. So if you can dry it completely, it doesn't like look nasty. So that's why it's bent. So why do they have a bent spoon in their bedroom? Uh, I was eating cereal and I don't know, I must have rolled over. It's all a lie. The candle's burning in the room, I'm not saying everybody has a candle burning in their room, but some of this stuff is still fairly impure, it may have been cut. Somebody may start to heat it up to a degree to get it warm enough to draw it off and that is what they're doing. You'll see a burnt bottom to the spoon, that is a giveaway. Some of it's so pure now, they just have to add a little bit of water to it, like bottled water, draw it up and use it. So it depends on, on what they're getting, what they've learned. One of the big giveaways, and this came from every parent, every parent, said there was always something in the bathroom that could be wrapped around the arm. This is what paramedics use, if I take this, I'm actually not, thank God, I'm not going to put it on myself, but if I was to wrap it around like this, my veins get engorged because I'm preventing the blood that's in my hand, that's getting pumped into my hand from my arteries, from coming back out through my veins. So my veins are popping up just like when you give blood or they're starting out in the hospital, it's the same thing, my veins get really big and identifiable and easy to hit with a needle. Then when the person shoots up, they have to release it, so it goes into their system. Now they're getting effects and they tend not to pay attention to this any longer. And one mother said, "I don't know why I kept finding her charging cord in the bathroom when there's no place in the bathroom to plug in the charging cord." It's because it was being used to wrap around the arm, like this. I've seen shoelaces like this in somebody's bathroom, I don't know where you would change a broken shoelace. But that's like the one room in the house where there's only one place to sit, it's not all that comfortable, maybe working on something. So these things were all telltale and one day a mother said to me, "You know, I should have known the first time I saw a looped belt." "So what's a looped belt?" She said, "No, my son would take his belt, put it through the buckle, I'm not going to ask anybody for a, for a prop right now, we'll just assume, then put it over their arm and then pull it. Well, when you get that tight, there's no holes down there, so they pull it, maybe hold it with their teeth, squirt it in and then let go, it would fall off and it would lay there and the belt still goes through the buckle. When you wear and use a belt, to use it, if it's buckled, it's on you, if it's off you, it's open. There's no reason for it to be through its buckle unless you're wearing it. When you take it off, it's open, when you put it on, it's closed." And she said, "I would find this belt in the bathroom, he would feel his euphoria and he would drop it on the ground." And that euphoria, that sensation is what prevents the person, that, that's what's leading in to what the cause of death is here. They don't feel the need to breathe. That reaction, which is in the pain family, you know from when you're a kid and you're swimming, maybe you went down a little too deep, maybe you're coming back up towards the surface, your lungs start to ache, you get a little panicky, all that goes away with an opioid. You take enough of it, you don't have the sensation to breathe, you become somnolent, tongue falls back, blocks your airway, and you go off into Neverland. It's occupying a receptor site in your central nervous system, the opioid is. So then naloxone, which is one of the medicines we give, is what I deem a perfect medicine, but not through what you might think. It's perfect in that it only has one job and really no side effects. People have been given thousands of times a dosage, nothing happens. Its only job, the only thing it does is block that receptor site in the body that opioids hang on to. If an opioid's there, it displaces it, occupies it. When it first went into the hands of police, when it went into the hands of, of some of the first responders, and by the way, when I became a medic in 1982, we had Narcan, it was around, we had to give it ID. But this medicine, I thought, "Wow, this is really going to help." You're exactly right, sorry, it's not a cure. But the one thing we can't fix is dead. So if we can get the person out of that respiratory arrest, out of that overdose, we can resuscitate them to point, at least we have somebody who has a shot. And that's so important to us. It is literally stockgap. And then when the ruler, the law came up and somebody mentioned, "How about we allow everybody to have it?" I initially thought, "Great idea, parents, everybody can have it, we can stop overdoses everywhere." And then it hit me, "Is this not the most, the greatest enabling tool in the world? Well, I'll wake up my son and I'll tell him, 'He almost died, that'll fix him, he'll get it into his head.'" No, he won't. Nope. Just like when the car was taken away, just like when they were tossed out of a house or whatever, other, you know, for a couple of weeks or whatever other strong measure we gave them, when they got fired from their job, that'll teach them? No, no it won't. And that was always my biggest fear. I said to people and they would say, "I need, I gotta have it in my house." I said, "Okay, you push that up your kid's nose, understand your kid is dead, dead. Squirt that up your kid's nose, but you're calling 911 immediately. As you finish pushing it, pick up your phone and call 911." I'll give you two scenarios. What if it doesn't work? "Wait a minute, two minutes, three minutes? How long are you gonna wait? Oh, and, and now we're gonna call EMS." Well, we've already probably burned another fistful of brain tissue in up here in time. And that's an accurate measurement. So it's my worry that this will be abused in that fashion, but there's no doubt that in the hands of rescuers, in the hands of competent people, in the hands of a well-educated family, that this is, this is an imperative thing in our, in our fight against this. There's several different kinds, there's several different brands, they're all incredibly expensive. You also have a prescription filled out for you by the state of Pennsylvania, and Jack Helling, is it the, it's not the Surgeon General, I think it's Physician G or something?
Physician General.
Okay, Physician General for Pennsylvania has written a blanket script for everybody. Wise move, they said, "Why don't you just make it over the counter?" "Well, then your insurance wouldn't cover it, would it?" No, so you go to CVS, you go to Write-8, anywhere, come in, cash or your card, whatever, go up and say, "I want it, I want Narcan" and you can get that filled there. And if you go on some of the websites you know for Narcan and some of the others, they'll actually guide you into the pharmacies that have it stocked. I'm not going to take any more of your time, but when we're finished here, if you want to come up and see this stuff, this is all benign material here, you can actually pick up and hold, it's not of any risk to you, but I want you to have hands on. And thank you for listening tonight. I'm not sure what the cure is for this or what the fix is for this, but it includes what we're doing and that's talking about it and putting light on this. I appreciate you coming here.